Into order. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Easton School Committee meeting for Tuesday, December 19, 2023. This meeting will be offered in a hybrid format with committee members attending both in person and remotely. Attendance by committee members may be remote, and remote attendance shall count toward the floor. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded from ECAT. This meeting is open to the public. We will take comments from in-person participants. If any in-person participants wish to make comments during the public comment period, please state your name and your full name and address before beginning your comments. So first item on the agenda is the introduction of our new school committee member. So we had a school committee member who resigned from her position last month, and yesterday the school committee and the select board joined the panel meeting at which we appointed our new school committee member. Yes, Kelly, welcome to the committee.
Thank you.
Any welcoming comments?
I am very excited to be here.
Great. Awesome. Questions from committee members?
We're glad that you're aboard and making us whole again.
No more vacancies.
Yes. Excellent. Great.
No more being the newest member.
Great. Great point.
You're not the rookie anymore.
Nope. Now you have to teach me the ropes. It's all.
No problem.
Okay. All right. So our next item on the agenda is the vote to appoint the vice chair of the school committee since our because our departing member was the vice chair. So I would like to make a vote. I nominate Jackie Wiseman to fulfill the vice chair position. Jackie is a long-term school committee member. She has served both as a chair and vice chair in the past, and I believe she would do an excellent job with filling in for the vice chair position. So Jackie, if you are able to come off mute, can you let us know if you would be open to be considered for the would you accept a nomination if the committee voted for it?
Would you like me to go back?
Yes. Yeah. I want to talk to Kelly. Can I ask a question about the role?
Sure.
What is the term of service?
This would be for the remainder of this year's term.
Which ends?
Which ends April 20th, 2023.
I think it's around the election.
Or until, or until, yes, post-election.
Okay.
We'll do another reorganization.
Can you just ask if Jackie can hear us?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Should have checked that at the start of the meeting. I'll add that to our process notes.
All right. Learn and progress.
Yes. Learn as we go.
It won't let me ask. I don't know if it's because I'm a host.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Very strange to have us not see the full.
So are we on Facebook Live still?
Don't always know.
Oh, there we are. There we go.
Great. Okay. Could she not hear us before?
I don't think so.
Okay. We'll have to start that part all over again. We said wonderful things.
Dress rehearsal.
Those open remarks, no one heard. Should we test if we can hear Jackie?
So normally on the screen here, we can see.
Oh, we would see her as well.
The participants.
I see. Okay. So there's still technical difficulties to work here.
Yep.
We can plan the party with the advisory.
The partee.
The partee.
Oh, I wonder if we should erase sports before we go live.
Maybe, but I think this is not too concerning. We should probably check them in the future and have like one of those giant post-its we could put over there.
Yes.
Or erase it.
Yes, but there's no lost names, and we just know about the Capri Suns.
And red and blue Doritos.
Yes.
Those are some item.
I don't think they make them. They're different flavors of green ones.
Somebody makes green.
There's green, like lion tortilla chips, but I don't know if they have like a Dorito. I actually know that they always love the last day because they get to do all the holiday parties and stuff. All the different advisory groups in classrooms. And his parents always loved that night before when I was supposed to buy. Great.
Six dozen cupcakes.
Exactly.
Tomorrow.
For tomorrow.
Homemade.
Target's usually out by then.
Jackie, right?
No.
Well, she can hear us. I don't know if she's she hasn't.
Can you hear me?
Yay!
All right. And is Marvel connected?
Marvel's not connected.
Okay. Okay. Can we do a quick check to make sure that Marvel can hear us and we can hear her?
Sure.
Marvel, can you?
Hi.
Hi.
Yes, I can hear you guys.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Brewer.
Thank you.
And ECAT. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So Jackie, did you hear we were on item three, which was appointing the vice chair? Were you able to hear that part?
No, I wasn't able to hear anything.
Okay. Apologies for that. So we just we introduced Kelly, and so moving on to the next item was the vote to appoint the vice chair, and I nominated you. So I wanted to see if you just confirm that you would be open to accepting a nomination for vice chair before we discuss further and vote.
Yes, thank you very much, Jen.
Okay. All right. Great. All right. So committee members, any does anybody have any does anybody want to nominate somebody else or have any discussion?
I'm very happy making motion to nominate Jackie. She's a great worker and great on the school committee.
Okay. All right. So do you want a second?
I loom a second.
Okay. Great. Okay. And roll call vote?
Oh, DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Persio, yes.
Okay. All right. Great. Look at us getting in a rhythm already. Okay. So next up is our student representative to the school committee update, and we have Marvel, who is attending remotely because she's the most dedicated student rep ever and is is joining us live from a track meet, I believe. So Marvel, if you can, if you can come off mute and provide your update.
Sure.
Great.
I'm sorry for any background noise. As said, I am at a track meet right now, but I just want to say good evening. Again, I apologize for a past absence, but I did enjoy watching the previous meet on ECAT. Regarding the students of EPS, many are extremely excited for the holiday break to begin, from festivities and holiday activities at the elementary schools to finishing up assessments in a festive manner at the schools. More specifically, at the high school, student council has been working diligently to prepare for a spirit week consisting of USA Day tomorrow, Hawaiian Day on Thursday, and festive clothing on Friday regarding the holidays, as long as a extravagant pep rally full of fun and games. In the middle school, many are also enjoying their focus block at EMS, which is a 20-minute study that has become more targeted towards the students' freedom over which room they decide on spending in the period. This period is also helpful as some students utilize the time to seek aid in their troubled classes by meeting with teachers and utilizing all their plentiful resources, which is great. So close to the holidays, many focus blocks are enjoying their 20 minutes together with festive activities, whether that be like cahoots or just games entirely. And then at our row, students are eager to finish projects, celebrate, and learn as December comes to an end. And then finally, at Blanch Ames, all the students are thriving with holiday traditions such as snowplagues, reading festive books, and so much more. Overall, a lot of the students are just eager to celebrate their respective holidays and see family and friends.
All right. Great. Thank you so much for the update and and good luck to you and to the team tonight at the meeting.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you. You too.
Bye, Marvel.
Thank you, Marvel.
All right. Next up is the schedule of payments. So since the school committee last met, we have approved one warrant, 045 S, which was completed yesterday on December 18. And next up is a personnel change. So Mrs. Brewer?
Thank you. Patricia Trish Mackey, Patricia Mackey, known as Trish through for most of us, is a very valued member of the Oliver Ames staff and has been in the Easton Public Schools since March 11, 2002, as a substitute teacher that led to subbing in the Oliver Ames High School office, which turned out to be a perfect fit for her. Trish was then appointed to the position of clerical aide to the department heads at Oliver Ames High School on November 29, 2006. Trish has been with the Easton Public Schools for 21 years and plans to retire on December 31, 2023. She has included a letter for retirement.
Okay. Great. I am writing to you today to officially announce my resignation from Easton Public Schools with my last day being December 31, 2023. I am making this request due to retirement. I am leaving as a grateful and appreciative person for the past 17 years that I have worked at Oliver Ames High School as an office assistant. I will be available for the next two weeks to help prepare my departure. Sincerely, Patricia Trish Mackey.
Great. Okay. So any any comments from the committee?
Yes.
Nancy?
So I did work with Trish at the Easton Middle School years ago, and I think it was the junior high at that point, and just she was a substitute all over the building, but just a very friendly, likable person. And now, when I come to the high school, she's she's the one right there. What can I do for you? How can I help? And she's just a great person, and I wish her the best in retirement.
Great. Any other committee members? Okay. I agree. I don't know Trish well, but I certainly recognize her presence in the Oliver Ames office. You will be missed, and we thank you very much for your service and wish you a wonderful retirement. Okay. Next on the agenda is the certified teacher substitute rate discussion and possible vote. Mrs. Brewer?
Thank you so much. We are in a substitute crisis right now, if I can term it as such, throughout the Commonwealth. This is not just for Easton, but this is for most of Massachusetts, if not all. We are having difficulty finding substitute teachers, qualified substitute teachers, really. So it's very hard for our teachers to be out of the building or paraprofessionals to be out of the building. It weighs very heavy on them, knowing that their classes may not be covered. So we're looking to we've done comps through in comparison to our neighboring districts. We are right up there, if not among the top, of of those districts that are the amount that we pay. We currently pay our substitute teachers $105 a day with our long-term substitute teachers $125 a day, and that is very comparable to the other to the other surrounding towns. We're looking to tap into a different group of people to come and substitute, and those are our certified teachers. So we're really hoping to kind of get them in our classrooms, certified teachers, that we can attract them at a higher rate. So I don't know if you remember, but about a year ago, we did change the sub rate for our nurses, our certified nurses. We raised the the sub rate for them. We're looking to do a similar a similar thing with our current with current certified teachers. We're proposing $190 a day for certified teachers to come in with $220 a day for long-term subs. And so we would have a differentiation between substitutes. We would have our regular sub rate if someone is not certified, but a certified teacher coming into the classroom to substitute, we would have at a higher rate. They bring a different skill set. They have training. They have a background in education. We they have training to execute lessons more efficiently. So we're really looking to gain more access to more qualified people in our in our pool of subs.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
Questions from the committee?
I do. So we these certified teachers are assume they're either in another job or their home. Is that is that how you're going to reach them?
Yes. We could even look at retired teachers, contracting them to come back to substitute. We want to make it really worthwhile for them in retirement, for them to come back. We can look at, you know, some there are districts that do have a differentiation of certified teacher rate. So many of those teachers are attracted to those districts right now rather than coming to us.
And do we right now in our substitute pool, do we have certified teachers?
Yes.
So those teachers, if if we vote on this tonight in the positive, those teachers would now go move up the scale to the 190 per day.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, and I just also want to add that I I agree that we definitely need substitutes because I have a couple of great nieces that have been in the cafeteria for a while, and they're not happy.
Yes.
You mentioned having done the comps around the local districts. Are they paying a similar rate for certified teachers?
That I don't have in front of me. I do know districts that are paying certified teachers. Unfortunately, Dr. Cabral is not able to be here tonight. I'm sure that the amount that she I feel confident the amount that she's setting is similar to comparable districts around us.
And do you have a sense of how many districts around us are doing this? Are the majority of them doing a separate rate for certified teachers?
We're seeing a turn of of people trying to figure out how do we attract more more teachers, more more qualified substitute teachers? I also just want to say that I'm not I'm not saying that the substitutes that we have in the buildings are not qualified. I really want to make that clear because our substitute teachers work really hard, and we're very thankful for those that come in that that, you know, come in day in, day out, and and they're here regardless. So I really want to stress our thanks to them. We do have many substitutes that come in practically every day due to the number of of staff members that might might be out on a given day. And it's not it's not a high rate. It's just because we have such large buildings that that we have jobs for them. So that's so that's I just want to make that clear, but also to let you know that having certified teachers in our classrooms, when our certified teachers are out, they do are they are able to provide a different experience.
I have a question. On on any given day, would there be a more or less of a need for a certified teacher versus a non-certified teacher? And would a if if both a certified teacher and a non-certified teacher were both going for the same spot, how would that work?
We're always in need of subs. I would love to get to a point where we're in that situation, but we're not there right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
And has that been a problem since the pandemic?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. We saw before the pandemic, we definitely saw a need for more substitutes, and we were advertising in various locations besides just our particular the same avenues that we've always taken. But since the pandemic, it is definitely an increase that we have seen in our in the need for substitute teachers or substitute educators because it's paraprofessionals, clerical, you know, whenever somebody's out, we actually clerical for for the the jobs that we have substitutes for. Yes. And this specifically would be certified teachers for teaching positions.
Would there be any differentiation between right because certification goes, say, K through five or six versus, you know, secondary? Would it be matching? Would it be any teach any certification at any level, PK to 12?
It would be a Massachusetts certified teacher.
Okay.
Of any years of experience?
Yes.
So if someone just completed and was waiting, finished their degree and was sort of waiting to get a full-time position, they would be qualified.
In order to have your degree, you have to you in order to have your license, you have to have completed your degree.
Right. So but a recent graduate, a recent teacher could be the same qualification.
Yes.
Is there any financial concern about this increase?
That's going to be my question.
So yeah, so that was run by our our director of finance, and that is not a concern at this time.
Yeah. So I think my understanding is that I believe our substitute budget has gone well under because we are not able to hire enough people.
Yeah. Okay. And what does happen is when a class does not have a substitute, we often will pull a paraprofessional to cover a class or at the middle school or high school where we do we might put them in the cafeteria where one person might be covering multiple classes. Obviously, we would like them to be in their classrooms, having some educational experience while their teacher is not there.
Okay. And just want to be mindful that Jackie's remote. Jackie, do you have any questions or comments for for Chrissy?
No, the financial question was going to be my question, so thank you for asking it, Kelly.
All righty. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this?
I just want to clarify. So this is a a permanent solution to a temporary problem.
A permanent solution to a problem that we saw on the rise that was amplified after COVID.
So moving forward, our budgets will need to reflect this increase?
Yes.
Or will it not make a difference?
Well, we'll do that analysis over, you know, as as the years progress to see if we need to make any adjustments to the substitute line. That will continue to be part of the process.
So is this a proposal to increase the rates in perpetuity until we make a new proposal? Or would it be that this is a decision for this school year, to Lauren's point, and then we would reassess our financials and make a determination on whether we can afford this going forward?
So this will be this is we are looking for this to be a permanent solution, and it's not just to attract for the 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 lack of substitutes. It's also because we want, you know, we want those opportunities to bring some of our retired teachers back, you know, and and to ask a retired teacher to come in for $100, $105 a day, it's there's not much appetite for that necessarily. And so we want to make it appealing. We want we have so much experience out there in our retired teachers that really will be exceptional at coming back and supporting our students. They bring so much knowledge, not just in the content, but also in classroom management, in, you know, ensuring that routines are being met. They know the runnings of the school already oftentimes. So so that's definitely what we're looking for, is somebody who is not necessarily new new to the game. But but of course, those that are new, we we want to bring them in because we want them to to apply to our positions. We want to attract people as well. So that we do see that a lot. We see some teachers, particularly in May or June, at the very end of the school year that that have just graduated, just got their license, and will want to come, and we can provide them with experiences that we want them to apply.
Okay. Any any other questions or comments from the committee?
Okay. I am definitely in support of this. I know that we've been looking for lots of creative solutions to to try to tackle the substitute problem. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the proposed rate increase for certified. So let me think. So the motion is to approve a rate increase for Massachusetts Massachusetts certified teachers for $190 a day for daily subs and $220 a day for long-term subs. Can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Persio, yes.
Great. All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mrs. Brewer.
Thank you.
All right. Hopefully, I would love for us to be able to get a follow-up report and see if, you know, if this is having an impact.
Absolutely.
That would be great. So maybe we could schedule something, a checkpoint in a month or six weeks from now.
Sure.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Next up is public comment, and so I am not seeing any public comment tonight. All right. Next item, we're superintendent notes. Dr. Cabral is not in attendance, so we'll move on to assistant superintendent notes. Mrs. Brewer?
Thank you again. I want to thank the community and our staff for dealing with the storms yesterday and the impact today. I know that last minute, we were making a lot of phone calls around buses and sending out messages around having to reroute buses. I know that our office staff was very thankful to the parents that they were able to contact and how understanding everybody was. So we were happy to be able to open schools today without issue. It's always better to have our kids in school where we can provide them with meals and learning activities. So we had a really great day. I was able yesterday to sit with some of the Blanch Ames students and the bus students and explain to them that they might be on the bus a little bit longer than normal and that they might go home and there might not be electricity, but it's okay not to be afraid. And they were very excited to go home and see what the situation was like. So I just wanted to say that. I also wanted to share that I was able to visit our music department today as they were spent the day writing unit plans for as we continue with our curriculum work. They have been really hit they hit the ground running, and we have a lot of wonderful things happening in the curriculum writing category, so I wanted to share that with you. Our goal is, once the departments finish a unit, is to be able to publish some of it on our website so that parents and people in the community will be able to see exactly what their children are learning in the classroom.
Great.
And then lastly, I just wanted to share with you about our professional development day coming up, January 12. I think I shared this last time, but it's I'd love to repeat it. We have a wonderful keynote speaker, Cornelius Minor, coming. We invite all of you to attend if you would like. He is focused on equity through academic achievement, and he is coming to us from New York. So I had some great Yankee conversations with him. And so but our director of diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility, Carles Perez, and our director of instruction of curriculum, sorry, Ann Weintraub, and I met with him. And he's very excited. He's very committed to not just providing a keynote and walking away. He's very committed to that. Any professional development that he does is sustainable and carries forward. So he will also be providing three sessions after the keynote for staff to attend.
That's great.
And the whole day, we have about 30 sessions that we'll be running for staff to choose from, focused on diversity. as they were, spent the day writing unit plans for, as we continue with our curriculum work. They have been really hit, they hit the ground running, and we have a lot of wonderful things happening in the curriculum writing category, so I wanted to share that with you. Our goal is, once the departments finish a unit, is to be able to publish some of it on our website, so that parents and people in the community will be able to see exactly what their children are learning in the classroom.
Great.
And then lastly, I just wanted to share with you about our professional development day coming up, January 12. I think I shared this last time, but it's, I, I'd love to repeat it. We have a wonderful keynote speaker, Cornelius Minor, coming. We invite all of you to attend if you would like. He is focused on equity through academic achievement, and he is coming to us from New York. So I had some great Yankee conversations with him. And so, but our Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Accessibility, Carols Perez, and our Director of Instruction of Curriculum, sorry, Anne Weintraub, and I met with him. And he's very excited. He's very committed to not just providing a keynote and walking away. He's very committed to that, any professional development that he does is sustainable and carries forward. So he will also be providing three sessions after the keynote for staff to attend.
That's great.
And the whole day, we have about 30 sessions that we'll be running for staff to choose from, focused on diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility, whether it's through curriculum or social, emotional well-being. So that's, that's our focus for the day. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So on to school committee notes. Nancy, any notes for this week?
Sure. I attended the winter concert for the high school, could not make the middle school concert. The, the high school winter concert was excellent. Just, it's amazing. And I know you talked about the National Honor Society, and that was just a wonderful celebration for those kids, too. So I think that's it.
Okay. All right. Jackie, do you have any notes for this week?
No notes. Just welcome to Kelly.
Okay. Lauren?
So I do not have much to say, because I was traveling all last week. So I missed the concerts, unfortunately. But I want to express that I think it was a very smart decision not to cancel school. I did see some, some conversations that people were questioning whether school should be canceled or not, and I think it was a very smart choice, because if a student did not have power, that means that they were sitting in their cold, cold home with no warm meals, and they now had the option of going to school and being warm and being fed. So I think that's really important. And last, and on that note, last week, I went on a walking field trip to the library with my fourth grader, and you'd think it was, you know, summer, because, and it's like such a difference in weather. And that was, that was a lovely day. And I was, it was a, a nice privilege and a great opportunity to spend time with the fourth grade classes. And that is it. And welcome, Kelly.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Right. Great. Thank you, Lauren. So Kelly, this is an opportunity to, if you have, I know you've been on for all of 24 hours.
Yep.
But if you, if you have any, any news or comments or updates that you'd like to share?
None at this point, other than just very glad to be here. And I appreciate all of you allowing me to join. And I had a chance to go down today and get sworn in, so I am excited to start getting up to speed and be able to attend more of the events.
Excellent. Well, welcome. We're very excited to have you. All righty. So just a few notes. Nancy talked about the concerts, which were really excellent. Last week, we had quite a few, there were quite a few events from last week. So on Monday, we had our monthly superintendent advisory committee meetings. That's a meeting with some representatives from the broader Easton community, different, different staff and educators within our schools, and some school committee members. So that was, as always, a very fruitful meeting, and we had a lot of good conversation and got to brainstorm a bit about our strategic plan. So we completed an exercise that we had done at a larger strategic planning meeting in November of envisioning what we think Easton Public Schools will look like in 2029. And there were, it, it was really, really wonderful to have the larger community output, because although in the larger strategy meeting, there were probably, I don't know, 30 or 40 of us, there were a lot of us in there, there were ideas brought forward last week that hadn't come from that original meeting. And so just committee members will, will be looking to schedule a short workshop in January for us to go through the same exercise. So that's one of our takeaways from that strategic planning meeting, was to go back with the school committee's point of view on that exercise as well, so that it's, it's really a great process. It's pulling in as many ideas as possible. And so I appreciate Chrissy's leadership in developing the planning process, so.
And it was, it was also great. We had some students there, too, that brought a very unique voice, which was wonderful.
Absolutely.
So we're looking at how to get more, more voice in from our students as well.
Yep. Absolutely. That was really great. Let's see. So I believe Nancy and Lauren have both participated in a hiring committee for an HR director for the district, so we hope to have somebody selected this month, right? By the end, end of the month?
Yes, it'll probably extend to January.
All right, great. And then in other subcommittee, oh, the Messiah Singh was last week. Nancy and I were able to attend.
We did.
Oh, my gosh.
Wonderful.
Oh, it's just, it's what you need. If you've never been, go. Take an hour and just, just be transported. It's, it's really wonderful. And then just a subcommittee update. I am the representative of the school committee to the audit committee. The audit committee met last week with the, the town's auditor, and I presented a summary of the fiscal year 2022 audit to the select board last night. So that work is complete, and the fiscal 2023 audit planning is underway. So just a quick update there, and that is all I have. So with that, I will make a motion, this is going to be a long one. Okay. So I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session, to return to open session, to discuss, let's see, so pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Subsection 21A7, to comply with open meeting law to review minutes of prior executive sessions from March 23, April 27, May 11, May 25, June 8, June 22, July 13, August 17, September 21, October 5, October 19, and November 2, all 2023. Can I get a sec? Oh, and, and, yes, thank you. And in my opinion, having this discussion in public would be detrimental to the position of the school committee. Okay. So can I get a second?
Loomis, second.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Weisman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Perseo, yes.
Okay. All right, great. So, so the meeting will recess briefly, and we will adjourn to a separate room. Okay. Great. All right. So welcome back, everybody. Let's see. So executive session minutes. I will make a motion to release at this time, the executive session minutes from, let's take these off to make sure we're covering all of them. All right. From April 27, 2023, June 8, 2023, July 13, 2023, October 19, 2023, and November 2, 2023. Can I get a second?
Perseo, second.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Perseo, yes.
Okay, great. All right. And then I make a motion to redact, as noted, or as discussed, and release the minutes from March 23, 2023, and August 17, 2023. Can I get a second?
Loomis, second.
Okay. And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Perseo, yes.
Okay, great. And then, let's see, finally, make sure I've got the right papers here. I make a motion to not release at this time, the executive session minutes from May 11, 2023, May 25, 2023, June 22, 2023, September 21, 2023, and October 5, 2023. Can I get a second?
Second, DeLuca.
All right. And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Perseo, yes.
All right. And last item on the agenda, our next school committee meeting is?
2024.
2024. And it is, I believe, that first week?
January 4.
January 4. So Thursday, January 4, 6:00 PM, here at Simmons Lecture Hall. And with that, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
DeLuca, yes. Adjourn, please.
Can I get a second?
Perseo, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Perseo, yes.
Great. All right. Thank you, everybody. Happy holidays.
Happy New Year.
Happy holidays.
Enjoy your vacation.
See you in 2024.